I think in Alderman, it's the only place that everybody's smiling and happy at budget time.
Don't speak too soon.
I don't see anybody where, well, there's a couple of people wearing red, so they're representing Santa Claus, and not anybody's wearing green, the Grinch, so that's a good sign. However, I'm feeling a little bit, feeling a little bit grinchy today, so we'll see what happens.
What's your knife?
I got the knife, it's as sharp as it can get. Anyways, we will, do I have to ask if there's any disclosures?
I think so.
Really? If you got a disclosure today, you might as well go home. I didn't have this part. So, any disclosures? Seeing none? We'll pass it right over to Craig, who's got some comments to make, and I don't see Mark on here, that's probably, probably a good thing. We'll get to a hockey game soon.
Thank you very much. So, this is the second of our three budgets, so you'll recall the rate budget was approved in January. This budget, the capital budget, it deals with tangible assets, and that includes things such as roads, bridges, fire halls, libraries, things that we build, you can touch and feel, Granville Lodge, as well as our fleet. The 10-year forecast in the budget before you is $246 million to replace and add assets, so that's fairly significant. The way that 246 million is funded is about three-quarters of it is from contribution from reserves, which is primarily taxation dollars. So roughly three-quarters of the capital is funded through taxation dollars, about seven-and-a-half percent is funded from development charges, and about 11% is funded from grants and subsidies from federal and provincial governments. And that's really important to sort of file in the back of your mind, because as the senior levels of governments make any changes to grants and subsidies, that can have a fairly dramatic effect on our capital program. And about four-and-a-half percent of the 10-year program is new debt, and that's primarily associated with the new Hagerzil Library, the Caledonia EMS, and the Dunville EMS, which is in 2026. And while the tax capital and tax operating budgets are considered separately, it's really important to recognize that the tax capital and operating are intrinsically linked. So historically, 1% of your operating budget has been funded from the, sorry, 1%, the 1% capital is part of the operating budget. So when you go into the operating budget, you've already got a 1% associated with the capital historically. And just a reminder that your approved term of council budget parameters are 2%. So roughly half of the operating budget is associated with what you do today. We also need to recognize that, given, or just as a reminder, you'll recall in November we did a workshop that tried to anticipate some of the implications that were happening as a result of some of the changes the province was making in terms of the impact to our budgeting. And in, we identified that that point in time, in order to hit the 2% parameter, we were going to be looking at trying to mitigate about $1.4 million. This, just to recall, you know, there were some changes to public health, social services, paramedic services, provincial transfers as well. We had some known budget drivers of our own, for example, a significant one was presumptive liability relating to firefighters. So, we identified those things. In the interim, we've seen some of those answers be provided, and some of the mitigation has happened through decisions that Norfolk made, and we've had some other revenue opportunities come up, but we've also had some unforeseen expenses, the OPP that we discussed being one of them. Point being is that we just need to make sure that whatever decisions we're making today, we're also, we're cognizant of the implication to the operating budget, which we'll be dealing within a couple of months. So, the 2020 budget has $37.1 million, 2021 is 34.1, and the point of that is this budget is front-ended, so those are the two most significant years. So in terms of trying to hit our 1%, we had some real challenges this year to fit the program within the funding envelope. And the reasons for that were we've used up a lot of the funding envelope for accelerated gravel road conversion, so council made that decision, and so that's taken up some of the room. Secondly, some cost increases, so construction costs per square foot have gone up. And then we've also got a few major commitments in the first couple of years of this budget. So, for example, we have the major park in the Empire Development in Caledonia, we have a new fire hall, Hagerzil New Library, major intersection improvement at Argyle and Haddington, and an arterial road in the south of Caledonia. So the combination of those things have largely taken up a lot of the room in the first couple of years. And so what we've had to do is we had to look at how we could fit all those things within the funding envelope. And so what we've had to do is we've had to, as part of this budget, make some prioritization and some movement. So we've had to push off a number of small projects, we pushed off some repairs to our Kohler, which is the fleet building that we need to do, but we also pushed off a $1.7 million bridge for Townline Road in order to fit the other things within the budget. So that one's in 2022. Part of trying to stay within the financial framework is to ensure we got the flexibility to respond to unforeseen issues. So, you know, to increase beyond the 1%, which we can do, but if, the more we do that, the less flexibility that we have. And there are a couple of risk issues that I wanted to highlight for council. So the first being is, we get about $2.7 million per year from the provincial government for capital, and it's through something called OSIF. I have no idea what that acronym stands for, but it's money that we use for, to help subsidize our capital program. The current agreement ends in 2022, so we have a sense that the province is going to continue to provide that to 2022. We don't know what's going to happen beyond that. We're cautiously optimistic that it will continue in some shape, we just don't know whether it'll be the same amount. The other part of this program is, this fund is not universal, and it really, only small municipalities get it, and we tend to get a fairly substantial amount of money. So on a provincial level, all the regions and the people that have a lot of, or areas where there's a lot of population, don't get this. So it's something that's important to us, but isn't important broadly. So while we're cautiously optimistic, we also recognize that this particular program doesn't have the big hitters in the corners advocating for it like we do. And then the second risk I wanted to raise for you was, as you're all aware, we had the significant storm event last October. We incurred about $4.9 million worth of cost. We have applied to the province for disaster relief funding, and that the budget does build into it that we will get the funding. If we don't get the funding, which is in the order of 4.2 million of that, then we will have to find ways of funding those programs, which essentially means, I think, relooking at the capital program and the timing of the capital program. So both of those are risk issues that we need to consider as we're considering part of this. So the last point is, associated with this particular budget, there's a series of briefing notes, and those briefing notes, some which have tax impacts, some which don't. The ones that do have tax impact, just to give you a heads up, it's almost a half percent cumulatively on that. Those are not currently built into the budget, and so council will have to decide the merits of those in terms of adding to the 1% after the main budget is presented. So with that, I'll turn it over to Charmaine for her presentation, unless there's some questions.
To the mayor, Craig, you mentioned about this disaster relief fund that we're hoping for, and I'm assuming some of these capital roads and stuff that got damaged last fall, they're actually itemized for this year's need to be done, or is it over the 10 years? That, like, I'm assuming none of these roads can be pushed out more than this year?
I can confirm with staff, but my understanding is, they were damaged, they gotta be fixed, they gotta be fixed now.
And this is the year for it? Okay, I guess I wanted to confirm that.
If I may further on that, that $0.2 million is a significant amount. If, what's the likelihood that we'll get that money, and you mentioned something about be prepared, I wonder if we have any contingency plan now to take a look if that not received? And is our MPP aware of what our requests are?
So, with respect to the latter, yes, the MPP is definitely aware of that, and staff have worked very closely with their counterparts at the ministry. In terms of the likelihood of success, it's really hard to know. I can tell you that, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, and is if we don't get it, what would be a contingency plan? And we do have contingency reserves, but it, you know, you can't continually raid those reserves, so what it does is if we did do that to offset these costs, it means that our flexibility to deal with other issues will be limited. So it's not a good situation, and that's why we're highlighting it as a potential risk, is that it's very important for us to ensure that we advocate as strongly as possible to get this money, because if we don't, $4 million on our capital budget is significant.
Just some further general questions with regard to what's going on. What criteria was used to, for example, move back that 1.7 million Townline Bridge in that particular area? I know it's been in the works now, but is there any problems associated for the residents out there? And why was it chosen? I understand it's a significant amount.
So, the reason it was chosen is, was a, when we were looking at trying to fit the program in, we were looking at the dollar values. It is a significant dollar value. It's my understanding that the date that the bridge was originally intended at this time, we did some work, we moved it up, now we pushed it back to the original date. But fundamentally, it was a trade-off between that amount of dollars and the number of people that would benefit from that work. So, you know, it's a low-volume road, it's one in which people can still get in and out, and really, it was a trade-off between that versus, say, example, the work that we're proposing in Caledonia, which is an intersection that doesn't work, that impacts a lot of people. So it was really a trade-off between trying to find the right amount of money and looking at who's going to benefit the most from the investments we are proposing.
Thank you. And a further thing, this $100,000 grant that we received, you said additional money's coming in, it's for BA assets, not included in the budget, just a general comment on that, how is that going to fit in?
Sure. So that grant is, I think if it is reflected, it'd be reflected in the operating budget, so it's not a capital matter. But that grant is intended to, and Mark can speak to it more, but it's intended to, in part, help us look at gaining efficiencies out of our computer systems, our technology. So one of the things to do involves is taking a serious, a hard look at our IS division, and looking at, do we have the right amount of people doing the right amount of things? And then looking at our technology and saying, how do we get the most out of the investments we've made in that technology?
So that'll be considered in the operational budget?
That would, yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Well, already.
Given the opening comments that Craig's provided to you, this will be fairly quick. He's already mentioned that this is the second budget, and we will see you again close to the end of April for the tax-supported operating budget. The goal next year is to accelerate these budgets significantly. We've mentioned that before, we'll do, we'll deal with the rate-supported budget before the end of 2020, so that we can have rates effective January 1st. Tax-supported capital will likely be early in February, and tax-supported operating early in March. Just to reiterate, our three key pillars of financial planning, flexibility, vulnerability, and sustainability, I'm going to go into those just a little bit more. This county has done a good job of trying to maintain some of these principles in regards to flexibility, vulnerability, and sustainability. This year, we've noticed a few challenges in these areas, so I want to make sure that you're aware of those. In regards to sustainability, we try to establish targets and principles for adequate levels of our reserves. Our hope is to not have reserves in a negative balance at the end of the 10-year forecast. You will notice that our capital replacement reserve general is in a negative balance beginning in 2022, and our capital replacement roads infrastructure is in a negative balance in 2026. We do maintain our assets in a condition to ensure safe, reliable, and affordable delivery of service, and we're trying to maintain adequate resources to fund all of these. As Craig mentioned, we do have, in the past several years, we're trying to increase our contribution to our capital requirements in the operating budget by 1%. In total, this year, our capital levy that is paid for by the tax-supported operating budget is 29%. Principles to mitigate vulnerability, we've established appropriate development charge rates and a local service policy that is intended to ensure that growth pays for growth. We try to limit our reliance on external revenue sources beyond our county's control. As Craig had mentioned, the OSIF funding, we will, we're expecting to receive funds in 2020 and 2021, but after that, we have no commitment, and that is extremely problematic. If that funding does not continue, it will have a direct impact on our long-term strategy, and we'll have to review the forecast as a whole. Just to note in regards to adding projects and deferring projects, we should note that the deferral of projects sometimes assists if we need to take some more time to get some development charges received, or more time to contribute to our own reserves in order to fund something. The deletion of projects could also result in additional funds being available in those reserves, and as we mentioned, we have a couple of problem areas. As well, additions or acceleration of capital works would negatively impact our long-range plan, because we don't have the funds necessarily available. We do target to have 35% of our, 35% of our tax-supported operating budget going towards our capital works. As I mentioned, we are, right now, we're at 29.2. Currently, we contribute $19.6 million to our capital program. 35% is about 23.5 million, so you can see from the graph that we are anticipating reaching that in 2026, if all things remain the same. This budget has a focus on state-of-good repair. Our target is 80% state-of-good repair and 20% new initiatives. You can see at the end of this time period that there's very little identified for new initiatives. In the past, the bulk of the new initiatives were the gravel road conversion program. As that is nearing completion, the regular maintenance of those flows into state-of-good repair, so that's what you're seeing in this graph. Our current infrastructure deficit, what this graph is showing you is that we are making great headway on our infrastructure deficit. I do need to note that that does come at a price where we are drawing down on our reserves. So although a good slide, there is a little bit more negative picture as we continue. The current, the expenditures that you're seeing right now in this 10-year forecast include approximately $37.1 million in 2020, and in total, we are expecting to spend just over $246 million in the 10-year period. This is an increase of over 22 million from last year's forecast. The focus, as you can see, is on the front end, and as Craig mentioned, is primarily in the transportation services area. This, this graph is showing you our forecasted financing sources. Our reserves and reserve funds account for approximately 75% of that funding of the capital, and as we noted, we are contributing to those reserves through our tax-supported levy. Also noted in here is our reliance on our federal gas tax, and as well, at the beginning of the time period, our reliance on OSIF, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Funding. Our long-term debt policy notes that we would remain within 10% of our own revenues. You can see a peak in 2023 where we reached 9.6%, that's about almost $12 million. Based on the purple chart, that is our development-related debt, and we are utilizing a lot of our capacity with our development-related debt. So we do need to review those policies as we move along, because the growth-related debt is utilizing most of our capacity.
Charmaine? Sorry. Can you maybe just explain that more relating to the fact that we, you know, we collect development charges, but we may have to finance and then recover it back over time? Just so council understands that comment?
Sure. Currently, we don't necessarily have all of the funds available in our development-charges reserve funds as the programs come along. So if we don't have funds available, we'll need to issue debt, and then as those funds come in, they pay for the debt charges. So back to one of my earlier comments, if we are able to delay some of those, it gives, provides us with a little bit more time to collect those development charges receipts, and then we don't have the related financing charges to pay it back. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, and I think the other point is, obviously, the more debt that you accumulate, the less flexibility you have to deal with other issues, so.
A question for Charmaine, or maybe Craig. With regard to the DC charges, when are they due from the developer, when there's an occupancy permit to said home that they've developed, or is it as soon as they are issued a building permit for the home?
Building permit time, currently. This is the overall impact on our reserves and reserve funds. Now, this excludes our federal gas tax and our CVF and our development charges. The balance in the reserves at the end of 2016 was about $36.3 million. The projection for the end of 2019, assuming all projects that were, that began were completed, is about $25.7 million. That's a reduction of $10.6 million. And we do not anticipate reaching those 2016 levels again in this 10-year forecast. We should also note that during the first five years of this forecast, we're spending more than we're contributing. Our usage is about $12.7 million over those five years, higher than our contributions. So we are continuing to draw down our reserves. We've recently made a lot of, a lot of great capital investments and improvements in the county, but that's an unsustainable trend, so we do need to review our capital plan to ensure that we're not increasing our spending. As I mentioned briefly earlier, in reviewing our capital replacement reserves, the capital replacement reserve general, which funds the bulk of our non-transportation items, is expected to be in a negative balance at the beginning of 2022, and it's not returning to positive until close to the end of the forecast. So that is problematic. As well, the roads infrastructure reserve will be in a negative balance around 2026. As I mentioned earlier, growth-related capital is problematic if it's in advance of the collection of the charges, so we do need to issue development-related debt. Our policy here is we try to ensure that the development-charges reserve funds are in positive, in aggregate, for the whole, for all of our development-charges reserve funds. For 2019, we project a negative balance in the DCRF roads, but overall, we're still projecting a positive balance at the end of 2019. Craig touched on some of the risks that we are looking at within this 10-year forecast, the first one being the municipal disaster recovery assistance. If we don't receive that funding, then we will have to review a different plan of where that, where that will come from, so Tyson will have to review the program as a whole. As well, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Funding, potential loss of that is extremely problematic, and it will result in reviewing our long-term strategy, and not just in the roads infrastructure area, but likely over the whole program. As well, the community benefit charge, you've heard us mention this several times, the draft regulations were just released, and that resulted in the parks development recreation and libraries being put back to development charges. As well, they removed the 10% deduction that was required in the past, so that's the good news. There is still some unknown in regards to parkland acquisition and cemeteries. As well, the transitional timeline was modified to be one year after the CBC regulations are in effect. And the caps on the CBC are still in effect, and right now, we don't have a way to analyze what that impact will be for Haldeman County. As final comments, we are committed to increased infrastructure investment, ensuring safe and reliable services to develop and grow this county. We are maintaining our credit rating based on our financial parameters, ensuring that our pillars are followed. Financial flexibility, we have, where we're managing our use of our debt and maintaining our relative health of the capital reserves. Next steps today for you, after we review the capital budget as a whole, we should go through each individual page, and as we get to the pages that relate to the brief, that should be when you deal with those. As well, at CIC on Tuesday, the GM of Financial and Data Services noted that we need a revision for the broadband project, so we'll need to deal with that resolution as well. And the final resolution will include a lot of financing changes, so I just want to outline what some of those are. And they're outlined in summary two, which I believe is a green page in your budget, on our net capital financing page. So it's a fairly long resolution that will have to be read out, and what it's doing is adjusting our financing plan in order to accommodate some of these items that we're currently dealing with. So we need to increase our contribution to community halls, and this is, I believe, likely the third year that we've been doing that. We need to increase our contributions to our capital replacement reserve general in order to get us through the first couple of years, and as I mentioned, we will be in a negative balance in 2022. As well, we're asking to close the Waste Management Reserve Fund and transfer those funds to the capital replacement reserve general. And also, when we financed the land purchase for Caledonia Fire Hall, we did not have sufficient funds in the land sales reserve. So there are sufficient funds now, so we would like to, at that time, we funded the project from CRR General, and as I mentioned, we're having such significant pressures there. We would like to switch- there. We, we would like to switch that to fund that from the land sales reserve. Overall, at the end of the day, the, we're maintaining the increase to the tax levy at 1% of $672,000. We should also note that on Appendix F outlines some other operating impacts that you will see in the tax-supported operating budget for a total of almost $21,000, and those are just ongoing. If we're buying a piece of equipment, we have to do a couple things. We, we may need gas for it, regular maintenance through the fleet division, things like that, as well as planned for the replacement of that in the future. And that's it.
Questions to Charmaine? No? Okay, well, let's get right into it. So, we're gonna go to page... It's like page nine of General Governance.
If I may, if I may, Your Worship, can, can I ask some general questions on the project changes, please?
You sure can. On what page?
Summary one in the blue page, and I must thank you for providing me with the enlarger, unfortunately enlarges the figures as well. If I may, the opera, the dental service, there's offsetting funds for that, it's noted at $323,000. Is there offsetting funds come from the province for that?
Through the mayor, yes. That was, that was dealt with through the Health and Social Services Advisory Committee, and that funding was rece- was, is available, and the project will proceed if the funding is received, but it was provincial funding. It's all completely offset.
Thank you. Second one has to do with the enhancement, the project manager, and I understand the need for it and agree with it, but we had someone seconded for the administration building. How does that move from one to the other? Is that a position that will disappear, and then we are creating one and leaving it as a net value?
Tyson can speak to it, but generally, yes, the intent is the, the project manager on the admin building will go away since the building is finalized, and that this is intended to ensure that we've got the capacity in the, the engineering area to be able to deal with all the various demands that are being made. But Tyson, do you want to speak to it?
Through the mayor. So I think Craig summed it up correctly, but I think to directly answer your question, the, the project manager for the, the new administration building was funded from that capital cost, and it doesn't transfer over to this, this project manager at all, so this one's directly funded from the granular conversion program. So they're not related at all.
All right, thank you very much. And then on the next page, if I may, the annual traffic count study, it's moved from the operating budget to capital budget. Just an explanation why we have moved that way.
Through the mayor. So the traffic count is a program that we do annually, and so that, just through sort of a legacy, has always been in the operating budget, but it's really more a technical study that's done every year. And so to make it more transparent and actually to put it in the right spot, it is shown in the capital, and there's a reduction that you'll see in the operating budget. So it's, the, the money's come out of the operating budget, and it's just moved over to the capital side. So you'll see it under the technical studies.
Thank you, thank you.
So page nine of General Government section, page eight, I think there's, there's nothing there anyway, so. Questions, comments? None. I'm gonna ask, community benefits charge bylaw update, $15,000. What is that? I know what it is with respect to DCs, but what is the $15,000 for?
Well, in three, Worship, it's a good question. At, at the end of the day, based on the, the proposed regs as they stand right now, if there is a community benefit charge and the county wants to enact a community benefit charge bylaw, which we will need to do if we want to acquire parkland and we want to maintain and improve cemeteries, we have to do a very similar study to what we do, did for the DC study. So it requires a consultant, and the process is almost exactly the same as DC's, which, you know, is gonna be a bit problematic. It's one of the concerns that we have with, with the proposed regs is that everyone who wants to put in a CBC bylaw will have to do it in a one-year timeframe, utilizing, there's only approximately two consultants that do these, this type of work in the province, so it, it is an issue, and the timing is an issue. But if we want to have the ability to pay for parkland acquisitions and cemetery improvements, we're gonna have to enact a CBC bylaw.
So I'm, I'm confused, because we just did our DCs, and I thought there was something relating to that, that change, and that it was, there was a sort of a hint that if that had been legislated, which it was going through at that process, that we would be our, we, I guess we would have been grandfathered in, because our timing of our DCs was within that timeframe.
In three, Worship, what we did, what we did when we did the DC bylaw, there was no regs out at that time. All there was is legislation that said that there was gonna be this conversion from certain services from development charges to a CBC regime. That's changed since that time. What we did when we did the bylaws, we set separate schedules, trying to identify what things would come out of the DC that would go into a potential CBC. That's all changed again with the, the regs that were just released this week. But in the end, every municipality, whatever services are no longer eligible under a development charges, the former Development Charges Act will have to come out, and then if you want to continue funding those services through growth, you'll have to enact a CBC bylaw. So it's, it's really a change in legislation, and everyone will have to redo it if you want to, you know, enact a bylaw, a CBC bylaw. There's no, there was no hedging against it. We have to do it if we want to continue to collect those charges in the future.
You're not off to a good start, Mark.
It's a, I don't wanna blame the province, but it is provincial legislation.
Under Legal and Support Services, Unscheduled Equipment Replacements, Furniture Replacement, and Unscheduled Furniture Replacement. What... Can I, Kathy? I, I, I'm just trying to understand...
I can, I can explain what those categories are about. If there's specific questions, Lori Friesen's here to respond.
Yeah, well, maybe define the category, and then I'll decide whether there's more questions coming.
I'll focus first on the furniture replacement line item. So that, that line item across the budget, especially the first half, significantly saw a significant reduction this year because of the H-Cab project. So we just replenished all of the furniture there. All of the excess furniture from the offices that we closed, we are right now going through a process of reassigning all of that furniture to our other work sites. So this furniture replacement is for the entire inventory in the county, not just the main office. It's for all of our work sites, roads, fire stations, water, wastewater, coler, and we're going to be looking at replenishing the older stock, because we have an inventory of scheduled replacement. So all of that line item is for scheduled replacements only, but as I mentioned, it's been reduced significantly because of the new project. And so we don't foresee that we're gonna need to have...
Scheduled or scheduled?
This, the furniture replacement, the middle line?
Oh, the middle one.
That's the one that was a significant reduction. That is all of our scheduled inventory replacement. So we have a, a complete inventory of every item in the county, and what we do is, we have it, we depreciate it through reserves, and what, and we have a schedule to replace them. We had to go in and revise that listing when we, when we constructed H-Cab and refurnished it, but what we're doing with the furniture from this office, for example, is we're looking at what is in excellent condition or good condition, and we're replenishing the, the items that were scheduled in other areas of the county for, to be replaced. So instead of buying new, we're just gonna reallocate, and it dropped those numbers significantly if you look at your last year's 10-year forecast. The other two items, the unscheduled furniture and unscheduled equipment replacements, those numbers are for items that come up that are not scheduled for replacement but break and have to be replaced. And we use that, we're very responsible when we do that. We, it's only for items that have to. So if, for example, I don't know, this isn't a good example, but if, for example, your chair, your desk broke and there wasn't, you could not use it, we have to replace that with something. If we don't have anything in our inventory, in which we typically don't keep a stock, we would use that, that budget line to replace it, because it's an unscheduled replacement.
So are those numbers supported by, say, a five-year average?
They're probably not, I, I can't, I can get that information for you, but my estimate off the top of my head would be the furniture one, maybe even low. You're looking at $5,000 to replace a workstation.
Right.
So, I mean, if you, $9,000 won't get you far, depending on the year you have. We're hoping that we won't need to use it now that we've just done H-Cab and we are gonna reallocate, but we don't want to be caught short either.
So you don't think those numbers are supporting what we're spending now?
I think they're, they're okay, and over the years. We, we have the $5,000 in equipment that, you know, we can, as a buffer, I guess, if we didn't use that. That one would be, we've dropped these in the past. That was the unscheduled equipment replacement, used to be quite a bit higher, and we've dropped that number over the past years to $5,000.
So back to the furniture replacement, because you said you reduced it, but I'm looking at it in this year as being double what, and sometimes even significantly more than in the following year. So why is it so high, 12.4 this year?
So that was reduced, so we've revised all of our inventory, and that number is for items that need to be replaced at other sites that we don't have left over from any space here.
What other sites?
Our fire halls, our police station, our police offices, all of those, and everything, anything that is county-owned, we furnish that.
So, so this year, we're spending 12.4, but 23, you're projecting 1,500. Like, I'm trying to understand the disparity from one year to the other.
So we have our inventory, and there's a life expectancy on every item. So the chair that you're sitting in may be a seven-year life expectancy, and so when we purchase it, we insert that life expectancy into the inventory schedule, and it comes up with a replacement date. So that, and, and then what we do every year is we'll take a look at the condition. So it's just because it says we're gonna replace it in seven years. If it's still in good condition, we don't replace it, and we adjust the numbers every year. So I don't know if that helps. And every item has a different life expectancy.
So just kind of this is a good year, year of the year.
That's right, and, and that's why you'll see, so for, so all of the furniture we just purchased in, in the new office, all of the workstations.
Gonna be about a year, 10 years from now.
It's a 20, 20, no, 20 years from now. So you don't see it on here at all. It'll be beyond this schedule.
Depends who's sitting in the chair. Software solution for procurement process activity, 10,800. What is that all about?
I'm gonna let Lori Friesen respond to that.
I may ask some questions this year that probably are a little bit different than the past. Don't take it that I'm questioning or challenging staff. I'm just, I think that it's, it's important for us, there's so many different things, and we've made a lot of changes. I just want council, the public, the media that's not here today, and, and people to appreciate really what's happening in, in this year's budget, is, because I know that not just us, everybody's having a crunch, everybody's having challenges, and I want to make sure that when we present a budget, it's a good budget, but it's also something that we've, we've taken the time to, to take a good, hard look at. So don't take it personal.
Not personal.
Okay.
So this is actually a recommendation for implementation of phase two of software. So we implemented it at phase one for our bids and tenders, which allowed our bid documents to be posted online, accessible to all vendors free, no charge, and it gave us a lot greater exposure to vendors outside of our municipality Ontario-wide, and it also meets legislation. We're, we're in our current state where we're, we weren't meeting the legislation requirements, so phase one met those requirements. Phase two is the second phase apart, which will allow bidders to bid online, so they wouldn't actually physically have to come to our site, drop off the package every Tuesday. They can bid online. It will tell them where they are in the bid process, where we're in the award process. It also has a contract management function, which helps with our risk mitigation, so we wouldn't actually have to do manual spreadsheets and various contract managers trying to track, what is their insurance due, have they got the right insurance coverage, is your WSIB up to date. It also has a vendor performance aspect, which has been a huge gap for us. So we've had really discontinuity from the different contract managers, how they can manage a contract. So this would actually have reminders and forms and online process for our staff that are out in the field managing the contracts, if there's vendor performance, and we can address them much earlier in the process rather than waiting till it's escalated and escalated, and now we're trying to backtrack a little bit further and get vendor performance on track.
So you're saying we just built this new building for no one to come and submit bids anymore?
We're, we're trying to make it more efficient.
Okay, good. Page 10, nothing there. Page 11?
Yeah, through your mayor. On, down here for cellphone, smartphone upgrade replacement, $76,000,000. Does that mean, like, is there getting a whole new whack of phones, or is that our cost of our current, like, everybody's phones? Just, if we just get some clarification.
Three, Worship, before I have Wilma give the details, I just want it for council and the public, and particularly for people streaming online, and hopefully the, the press when they read, they stream online afterwards. With all of our equipment, similar to the furniture and equipment, all the IT software replacement, all of our fleet replacement, all of the equipment in the fire halls, EMS, Grandview Lodge, are all fundamentally done the same way. We've got life expectancies for all the equipment, and we plan for the life expectancies at that time it happens. So you'll always see in all those areas fluctuations up and down, depending on the, the nature of the equipment, timing of the equipment, cost of the equipment, et cetera. So I, I mean, you'll, you'll see it in all those areas. So I just want to preface, from a process perspective, that's how it's always gonna look. And I think, again, in the IT area, similar to what happened in the furniture because of H-Cab, there's been a lot of reductions in costs in certain areas, shifting of time maybe because of new, new equipment and software, et cetera. So again, there's a lot of changes in this area. So all these questions are, are well-warranted, quite frankly. Thank you.
So through the mayor, the, the replacement of the cell phones, we're on a two-year replacement plan for the devices, and the costs have increased because we have had approval last year for additional devices. So that's the, the higher amount every two years, and in between, very much like Kathy just described with the furniture, there's parts that break that, they're not due for replacement. It's not just the phone itself, it's the cases that we purchased to protect the phones. The clips break, that type of thing, so we replace those unexpectedly during those off-years.
While you're here, so as I toured the building, noticed that there's all sorts of nice new equipment all across the, that building. I'm wondering, the desktop charge for this year of $84,000, $85,000, what, what does that, where's that being deployed?
So those are the replacements of desktops. So what you saw at the building, we did a, a mobile or a portable strategy a few years ago, so a lot of those computers were replaced with the two-in-ones, but we still have a lot of desktops, not just in the new admin building, but like Kathy described, fire halls, Grandview Lodge, libraries, we have a lot of desktops. So those desktops are due for replacement. As Mark just mentioned, we have a replacement cycle, so that happens every five years.
So for clarity's sake, these are desktops that are not in the admin building, these are in the other services?
They could be anywhere, but they're in, yeah, throughout the county. Not necess- there's very few desktops in the new admin building.
So, other than the fire halls, there's libraries? Libraries.
Libraries, museums, fire halls, Grandview Lodge.
So how many desktops does that look like, 85,000?
That is 147 desktops.
Okay.
And 40, sorry, we have a total of 147 desktops. 47 are due for replacement in 2020. So that's at 84,600.
So 47 desktops is 85 grand?
Yes. That, that's about $1,800 per desktop. That includes the desktop, the monitor, the keyboard, the mouse, the, the operating system that comes with it.
And then next year, it looks like we're gonna have about another 60, 70?
71, yeah, close.
And then the year later, we're gonna have, it looks like, another 35?
25, yeah.
So, I, I'm trying to understa- it seems like a lot of desktops that are being deployed out there.
We have 147 in total.
Outside of, outside of our general office, our new office today, we have 147 desktops out there?
There's 147 in total. So there are some in the new office. I can't, I don't know the exact count in that building right now. I want to say about 20, 25, so we still have 120.
There's 120 desktops outside of...
25, yes.
And we'll have all of them replaced in current... And we'll have all of them replaced and current within the next three years, which will give us about a three-year cycle. Why is, that's why we're seeing, well, it looks like just two years we're seeing off?
Yeah, we have a five-year cycle. What has happened because of the transition to the portable technology, things were fast-tracked for the portable technology. So that one year where there are none, that sort of catch, that's caught up to what we have replaced. And then from that point forward, it will be every five years.
Bernie is on this one?
Yes, it is. How much do we cover on sales? What percentage of recovery would be on sales of these when you put them on the bid line?
I don't have the exact amount, but the, the auction, when they're, when they're put on the online auction, they go from anywhere from $50 to, I don't know, sometimes 250.
So it's just minimum?
It's minimal. They're five years old at that point, typically when they're option, well, they're probably almost six years old when they're auctioned.
Thank you.
Uninterrupted power supply, 11,000. And it's 1,000 every other year?
Yeah, so those are the, the main battery backups. The 11,000 is for a disaster recovery site, and then the other years are for a lot of those desktops that require the battery backup in case of power outages, if they're in the middle of doing something in the software solution. A lot of the software solutions do not like to have a power outage.
So where's that 11,000 going?
That 11,000, let me just, there's, there, the disaster recovery site has.
Where is it?
Yeah.
Oh, where is, it's at the Dunville multipurpose.
And portable two-in-ones, I know there's something in the new initiatives, but can you just explain that, elaborate on the 78,300? That's not at the office.
The, okay, just a second. I'm just flipping through a couple here. The portable two-in-ones, so that is a number that I will check here. That's 27 two-in-ones. So those are, those are ones that haven't been purchased yet for people that are outside of the administration, the new administration building. So there's still some.
That's what that is, right? That's the two-in-one.
That's, that's what we refer to a two-in-one, and there's two models of these that we have, that are ones for sort of interior, ones, one looks more like a tablet for outside workers.
And the numbers don't seem to be consistent year to year. So what are, what are we just, are we targeting a, like, are we following a two-year, three-year, four-year cycle? Or how is it that you're coming up with the annual numbers?
So it's, it's based on a five-year replacement cycle as well. And those, we have a quantity of 252 that are deployed, or will be deployed altogether in 2020. Not, in total, we'll have 252 deployed altogether, once we purchase the ones in 2020. So those are the ones that have been approved for, through various reports to council, for the portable strategy, the portable desktop strategy. So the, the transition to these is going to be finalized for the ones that were approved to go from a desktop to a two-in-one. The final ones will be done in 2020.
So the ones in the new office, where I'm walking around, I'm seeing everybody with the two monitors, are they using, for the most part, those two-in-ones, or are they using these desktops or?
For the most part, they are using the two-in-ones, and they're connected to the dual monitors.
Okay. Rob?
On that, with some, well, with the decision we made to close some of our existing offices and relocate to one building, has there been some efficiencies in the numbers of these phones, desktops, whatever? Can you relate to that and comment on that?
Through the mayor, I would say that the numbers are almost equated to the number of staff. So the, the number of staff haven't really changed, so the numbers of, the number of technology required for the staff hasn't changed as well.
Okay. No, I thought there might be some spots where maybe based on the location of staff now, there might be, so you're basically saying it's still one-to-one?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know on a, it looks like, five-year basis, we are throwing 350,000 into servers. So what would those servers be for this year?
Those servers, it's, it's, so we have a virtual environment. So there's some core servers, and it has storage attached to it. That is in the main data center at the new H-Cab now. So we transitioned the, the equipment that was here in our data center to the new building. Those are due for replacement.
So, wouldn't we have just put new ones in when we were building it there?
No, we, we chose not to do that, because I would just throw a whole other big project in the midst of other projects that were happening.
So this would have, this is one item that when we approved the budget for the admin building, including all the equipment that we thought was going in, it, servers weren't part of that?
That was not part of that, correct.
No, no, I'm not saying it. I just was trying to, trying to find something out of that. Okay, page 12. Wilma, while you're, sorry, just, just, you can yell it out, but what's a tablet, then? What's the difference between a two-in-one and a tablet?
The tablet, we have a number of tablets that are used at Grandview Lodge. They're sort of your smaller little tablet that is, they're not really like the iPad, they're like a Samsung tablet. We do, we still have some of the iPads as well, but typically it's mainly the Grandview Lodge tablets. They're the lower-end tablets, and they did change from a five-year replacement cycle to a three-year replacement cycle. Just do, the, the cost of those are much less than the two-in-one.
Rob?
On that, seeing council court but having one of them, is that the plan for all of us to have them, or is that still to be implemented in the next few years?
Actually, the last year's budget was the approval for council to get a two-in-one, and we just have to schedule the training and the implementation of those yet.
And the plan is to go more paperless then?
Yes.
Okay. Wanted to know that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for under fleet and equipment pool, the question is with regard to the gravel road conversion, and it's supposed to have a payback period of five to six years. What are we seeing in transition of vehicles from gravel to batum and surfacing?
Probably getting rid of a few graders down the road.
Page you on?
13, equipment, fleet and equipment pool. Am I on the wrong?
No, that's good.
Okay.
Just a general question.
The general question was, what's the impacts of equipment changes with the gravel conversion?
Yes.
Primarily, it's our maintenance equipment that we service our gravel roads with that'll be impacted, like graders. We're looking, and probably coming forward this year with a report on the change-out of how we service our roads, our equipment changes, our staffing changes, and reduction in funding as well for the maintenance of those roads.
How about the big equipment like graders? Are you going to need as many?
We, we anticipate that we won't. We'll likely be converting them to either tandems or singles or five tons.
Thank you.
Don't go too far, Ray, man. It might be you, I don't know. It, pickup trucks. I'm trying to get an idea of what we're looking for. Just happens that we just did budget for Long Point, proved some pickup trucks, and they came in quite, quite a bit lower than what we're proposing here. So I'm just wondering what it is that we're doing. The one you've got down here for 45,000 on page 13.
Yeah, I would have to defer that to Mike.
Is it, okay, sorry, sorry. And then on page 14, Mike, there's five pickup trucks for an average of 42,000 each. And then there's a pickup truck for 32,000, and then another one below that for 45,000. So I'm trying to just get an idea, is our budget that we've seen over at Long Point, not, not saying one's better than the other, but it just, they were able to get four-by-four pickup trucks for around 30 grand in their budget. So I just wanted.
So through the chair, there's different classes of pickup trucks. So you could have an extended cab, four-by-four, and a lot of it has to be outfitted. Certain vehicles need certain light bars, back racks, toolboxes, so some of that comes into play. The 32,000 dollar pickup truck at the bottom of 14, that's actually a compact SUV. That was misprinted there.
Okay. The, so when we're getting rid of an old pickup truck that has the back rack and other equipment, can we not repurpose that equipment?
Sometimes you can. Sometimes they're specific to the year and the model. And we try to, just, a lot of times they're rusty, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to flip them from one to another.
So are all these pickup trucks, other than that SUV mistake, are they all four-by-fours that were?
No, the, the five pickup trucks at the top, that, they're crew cab pickup trucks.
Right.
Two-wheel drive, and then you do get into a couple four-by-four pickup trucks, and some are just extended cab pickup trucks. Some need fuel, mobile fuel tanks in the back to outfit them.
Okay. And all, and that, so all of that equipment you're billing, you're putting into this number?
Yes.
Not just the truck itself?
Yes.
But those fuel tanks aren't something, again, that can be ported from one truck to another?
They can be, depends on the age of them, too. We try to flip as much as we can over.
Yeah. One of the things that, with the transition to the, the new admin building and potentially some changes in hours of operation, so for example, building and bylaw, our building used to only have half-day out in the field, now they can be out in the field all day. So one of the things the SMT is committed to look at this year is whether there's an opportunity to achieve some greater efficiencies with the, the sharing of vehicles and things like that. It doesn't directly answer the question, but I want you to be aware of that. Staff is in fact looking at trying to ensure that our fleet resources match the, the need, and that where we can gain efficiencies, we will.
Any other questions there? No? 16?
Oh, sorry.
That's Patterson and then.
Yeah, through the, through the chair, and it's just a statement, maybe it might save some questions and simplify things. I understand what the mayor's saying, because the Long Point, I think it was 32 for four-by-two and 34 for a four-by-four, but maybe going forward, we just, we don't need a lot of discretion, just say, hey, these five trucks is a crew cab, four-wheel drive, or whatever, and it might just save 10 minutes of questions that we don't really need, or we wouldn't ask if we had that information.
Page 16. Oh, sorry, yeah.
Do I have to bring up the Third Bridge again, to make you not forget me?
You might see that later, later in the day, don't worry.
Thanks, Mike. Just on both pages here, we've got all these string trimmers that we're buying, and there's about 13 of them. And we've got budgeted here, $600 a string trimmer. And I know from personally, going out and buying a pretty good one, I spent about $300. How did we arrive at $600 apiece? It seems a little overpriced.
I.
That's not you, is it?
It is me. It's more my, the supervisor fleet usually looks after the small equipment, and he can deal directly with the lead hands, the supervisors. From my knowledge, they're, they're roughly around that, $500.
Oh, well, I got a dual head still, and anyways, I'm just, okay.
I think the answer, and you're going to hear this, this answer a lot, but the answer is, is the, the equipment that we're purchasing is not your standard residential equipment. It's, it's, it's industrial-scale equipment, too, and so it has a slightly higher price.
No, I, I get that. I totally understand that, for sure.
A little bit better than the Mastercraft, you got a Canadian tire.
Trust me, Bert enjoyed seeing me walk through the door again. Thanks, Mike.
Mark?
Sorry, Mr. Before we leave this page, this is where the applicable, I'll try to stop us when we hit the briefing notes. So the one on the electric vehicle with fallen asleep.
Are we on this page?
Yeah, if you want to consider that, as we hit the pages, have the discussion, and then if there is, typically what we do is do a motion on each one, or you can wait to do motions on all of them at the end.
Do we want to do them at the end, or do we want to do them?
It's three words, it's how you want to deal with it. Each briefing tells you what the levy impact is of each one, if there, if there is a levy impact.
Well, noticing and reading this briefing that it's all kind of funded by vibrancy, I'm not sure we need to really discuss it. It's not impacting the budget at this time. We can discuss it maybe later, but, or whatever. But there's no impact, so maybe we should speak on it. Let's hear.
Mark?
Through your worship, whether it's a budget impact or not, doesn't change the decision about purchasing something, right? So the warrant, merits or warrants of whether the program or expense occurs still has to occur, and there still needs to be a motion, because again, these are not included in the budget right now. So we'll have to get applicable expenditure and the applicable revenue source as, for each, a motion for each of those changes, if council so wishes to make the change.
If I could make a suggestion, I think we can deal with this particular one now, but given the fact that the remaining do have funding implications, and given the comments that I made at the beginning, maybe we can flag them, but then deal with them after the budget, because we really are talking about then adding, adding to the 1%. And then, if, if that would be okay with council, this particular one, I think, can be dealt with now because of the, the way it's being funded, if you're okay with that?
I just wanted to add one thing about the program, the fleet program. So basically, we have an asset management program where we have certain life expectancies for certain vehicles, but Mike and his group do, they're due diligence on every piece of equipment when they're coming up. And so if, if a piece of equipment has a low mileage, or whether it has, it's in better shape, it may be implemented somewhere else within the group, or it, or it could be extended its life. So there's a lot that goes on, and I just wanted to explain that for the public, that it's, just because it, it hits a certain trigger, it doesn't mean that we don't do a thorough, extensive investigation. And that includes any of the pieces of the equipment that go along with it. And the mayor brought those sorts of things up, whether it's toolboxes, whether it's, you know, the gas containers or those sorts of things. And, and they also have life expectancies, and we have to make sure we look at them carefully. So that's part of the process and part of fleet's business.
Probably the biggest example of that would be, and, and correct me if I got it wrong, but conversion of plows to the tankers for the fire apparatus. So when the plow reaches a certain stage, they then convert it so that we're getting dual use out of it. So, which saves a lot of money in the long run.
Okay. So, and, and again, I don't, I, I fully support and agree that with that comment, Phil, and, and know in the past, you know, where staff have been able to find areas to, to be efficient, we've, we've seen it more often than not demonstrated. And so it's, for, for me, it's, and I think it's, Stu made it very clear, you know, it's just not having, maybe a little, just a little bit of a blurb underneath it that just defines, this is a specific pickup or a different pickup, and it just gives us a little bit more, you know, and on the other hand, it just, for, if we don't ask the questions, then, then someone's saying, why aren't you asking the questions? So, so don't, do not take this as, as that we, we believe that you're not, our staff isn't doing that, because I don't, I, I know that everybody feels that, that the staff have taken a very, very cautious approach to this budget over the last six months to get this in front of us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we actually have taken note, and we'll make sure that we get a little more detail of the vehicles that are, in the current year at least.
So with this motion in front of you, I, and some of you that were in Ottawa may have seen this, and, and may not have, but currently, you know, the, the pressures across the country is to, to look at being environmentally friendly and, and where possible, you know, bring opportunities of environmental-friendly vehicles. And, and it came to, to mind with the fact that our union renegotiations has allowed us to. the fact that our union renegotiations has allowed us to, to extend and enhance our bylaw department, that one of these two vehicles that I'm proposing could be used for bylaw purposes, and could be deployed in the different communities at different times. It's an electric vehicle, and it will be fully contained. It's a two-seater, very easy to navigate in and out of traffic, and just simply requires to be plugged in overnight, so that it's, you know, it's, it can be used on a daily basis. Primarily, obviously, it's, it's more of a six-month seasonal-type vehicle, so it could be something that we could use with bringing on that student, summer student for bylaw. It's a, it's a trial, test thing, but I, I do think there's, there's merit in it, and, and I think that there's a very positive message. The vehicle will be branded with the Haldeman County logo, and it will certainly stand out as it's driving through the communities. The second vehicle's a four-seater, and what my thought behind that one was, is that it can be used for different social events, such as the Mud Cat Parade Festival, so traveling, traveling and bringing people in and around the community, whether it can be used in Caledonia for the Canada Day Parade or festivities, you know, did Kiuga as well with the, the, can't even think of the name of it.
Kiuga Fest?
Kiuga Fest, yeah. And so as well as it's, I'd like to trial-run it with a couple of local groups, and I've talked to Council Schertin about it, and particularly with Dunville, and possibly share with a local group like the Chamber or the BIA, and if there's a volunteer that would be interested in, in taking it and driving individuals who need, you know, a ride in and out of, you know, within the community from, say, to the doctors, or over to the pharmacy, or the, or to the grocery store, what have you. And it's just, again, it's a trial run. I'd like to see what kind of uptake that we get with it. If, if we don't, if it doesn't come to the fruition that, that we have, the, the dealership that we're purchasing it from has, has actually assured me that they would take, take it back, obviously on a depreciated value, but they certainly would take it back. So I think our risk is pretty minimal. But I think the upside to it and being able to demonstrate two things. One is we're going environmentally friendly with it, but also we're, we're going to be able to sort of highlight our bylaw officer floating in and around the community, because it's going to be very visible. And we're also going to respond to somewhat of a public need in being able to move people across the communities at a low cost. So I want to say thanks to the three councillors who I've talked to that have agreed to use the vibrancy funds to be able to support this, because didn't want it to hit the tax base. And at the same time, I, it, it benefits everybody in the county, not just specifically their ward, so it's, it's, it's very appreciative from, from my perspective, and that they're able to support it for, for everybody to have and the use of the whole, whole county. So, so I'm excited about it. I think it, it could possibly be a movement towards maybe more in, in the future, depending on how this, how this spends out, so. Yeah.
So just to be clear, this is about the capital purchase, and in terms of operationalizing it, we'll, we'll, we'll need to look at ways in terms of making it happen and those sorts of things, but the really decision today is the capital.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah. So, read this motion out, that we need to move in a second, or that the 2020 draft tax support capital budget forecast, twenty to twenty-nine, be amended as follows on page thirteen, under fleet and equipment pool. In the year 2020, we added low-speed electric vehicles with a gross expenditure of forty-five thousand and the related funding of fifteen thousand each from wards one, two, and five Community Vibrancy Fund, and that a cost of a thousand dollars be added to equip, to equip the vehicle for building inspection purposes and the related funding from the Building Permit Cost Stabilization Reserve Fund. And that second paragraph, just forgot to mention, the bylaw vehicle, the two-seater, we could subsidize it and cross-purpose it for, for building inspection purposes, and so that, that possibly would be, become part of a use of it as well. Then if you see in the brochure, we'd have to flush it out, but in the brochure, there's a tandem vehicle with, with a dump on the back. The potential purpose behind that could be for our students possibly, within the summer, with FAPo and using him for the, you know, to clean the parks and keep, keep the parks up to, up to snuff. So, so it's just an idea, but I think we'll start with these two and see where it goes. So, Council Schertin seconded, Council Medcalf, all those in favor? That's supported unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Stu, Rob, and Don. Page fourteen, we already did. Fifteen, I think we already did. Sixteen? Stu?
Oh, sorry, I was waiting for page seventeen.
Maybe, Mike, can you just, again, I'm gonna ask these questions all day today with respect to the ongoing maintenance kind of items. So, two-way radios for four thousand a year, are, do we, is that an average, or are we spending that, or it's?
Through the chair, yes, and some radios are more expensive, and they've been getting them more expensive over the years, so they're around eight hundred, nine hundred dollars for a two-way radio.
And what are we getting out of them in terms of life expectancy?
Um, we're probably getting five to six years anyways.
So how many do we actually have on?
Whoa, a hundred and, I, it's in the hundreds, a hundred and thirty. We got quite a bit. Like, say, we try to flip them back into the vehicle, but if it's outdated or broken, we just buy a new one.
So are they, are they, is it possible to, I mean, use a cellphone? Like, do they, most of these people carry a county cellphone?
Most of the vehicles where the two-way radios on or in, no, they don't. But even though we put them in supervisors' foremans, that's how they contact the, the staff that don't have the cellphones.
So wouldn't all the vehicles that we're purchasing now have Bluetooth?
Yes, they would.
So couldn't they, couldn't they contact or use the cellphone through the Bluetooth or through that?
Well, the, the staff that are, the working staff out there don't have cellphones, so they're using the two-way radio to contact supervisors, foremans, or, or other staff out there.
And then the other one was the Kohler facility, and five thousand every year.
That's for general repairs and upkeep.
And again, is that substantiated roughly, is that an average on five years?
It, it's an average, but there's not a lot you can do with five thousand dollars, too. So it, a lot of times, we have lots of needs in Kohler, but we just don't, the five thousand's just not gonna cut it, so, you know, we have the build and refurb in there, so a lot of things will be done through that. But this is basically general upkeep for five thousand dollars.
Okay. Seventeen? Stu, Stu, and then Bernie.
I do, too. I might get answered, so.
No, just through the chair, just at the bottom of the page, the renovations that we did on behalf of Health and Social Services, it's quite a bit of money, and I'm just wondering if we could touch on what we're generating as far as monthly rent, and do we have a multi-year contract with Health and Social Services?
So I can try to respond to that one. I can't give you the exact number for the rent revenue offhand. We did just have a report come to council about a month ago approving two new leases for Health and Social Services, one in the Caledonia Arena office that we just vacated, and the other one in the Dunville Satellite Office at the multipurpose building in Dunville that we just vacated. That is where these renovation costs are applied to. So the, we do have market rent, we do have sixteen dollars a square foot in Caledonia, fourteen dollars a square foot in Dunville. It's exactly the same as what we were paying for our rent in Caledonia and what they already pay for the existing space they have in Dunville. So we do market checks on that. I can get you the total annual amount by checking the report, once my computer's charged back up. But as far as the renovation costs, what this does is it, in, in Caledonia in particular, we're also moving the OPP to that location, so we are using that space, which wasn't a huge space to begin with, and we're dividing it into two areas. And outfitting that, it, it also includes some furnishings, not everything. We're gonna repurpose what we can. And to maximize the space, we do need to buy a little bit of furniture, but it does outfit the reception office to accessibility standards, as well as to the security requirements that the Health and Social Services and police need in Caledonia. In Dunville, we are just still working on finalizing what is necessary there. That is where the dental suite will go, which is, which is the one that Councilor Corbett mentioned earlier and is completely funded. The reason the funding, just another note, the reason the funding for this project is in Haldeman County's budget is because there has been an agreement that any works in Norfolk County offices, so they just re, redeveloped their Gilbertson Head Office for Health and Social Services within the last few years. They paid for all of those costs, did not bill the county back. We are doing the same for our share, our facilities that are here. It's an incentive to keep the staff in our community that provide those services to our vulnerable population. So I'm not sure if that answers your question in full, or if there's others.
No, just a follow-up, Kathy, thanks for that explanation, but I would be curious if, when you can pull that information together, just to see how many years it's gonna take us to, you know...
To recoup those costs.
Recoup those dollars would be appreciated. Thanks.
Okay. Just one note on that as well, and I will get you that information, is these, it's important to note that this isn't, the previous Caledonia Satellite Office we rented, these are our own facilities, so any of the works that are being done there are a benefit to our property values as well. So it may not be full, like, the intent might not be full cost recovery from rental revenue, since we're the ones that are the owner of the facility, but I will definitely get you the rental revenue.
Yeah, my question was similar, and what I hear you're saying is that the rental rate is set so as to recover these capital and other costs.
The rental rate is set to cover some of them, and it's, and it's set to cover all operating costs. So some of the capital costs are a benefit to the owner of the property, which is Haldeman, so we will eat some of those. They, I mean, even though we're gonna continue to rent, and you can say that it's gonna go towards that, the, typically, the intent is the owner of the property is improving the value of their own land and own property, so some of that will, will not, isn't considered to be recoverable through their rental revenue. And one other important point I should note is that this amount was actually approved in last year's capital budget, but we haven't, we're just starting to do the work now as a result of vacating the land, the properties, which is why it's carried over to 2020.
I'm gonna steal some of the mayor's thunder here. My question is on some of these ongoing maintenance, asbestos management. I would assume by now that we've gone through all our buildings, and I can't imagine why we still have ten years of asbestos checkups, number one. Number two, I'm thinking with the reduction of buildings, that we, we still have an ongoing twenty-five thousand dollars, lock and security, twenty thousand, those type of things with the less buildings, I, I would assume we'd see less dollars being allocated. And then lastly, I, I, this is only for myself, I know it's out there quite a ways, is that communication tower, is that the one that we own on Eamon Road, or no?
Through the mayor, that's the one that's gonna be, is it the, Dave can probably come up and answer that, but it's the one...
Just because I'm thinking, I hope it's not Eamon Road, because I'm thinking, we're gonna try to sell that for the last ten years, and I hope it's not out there to two-twenty-four.
Yeah, through the mayor, it is the tower on Eamon Road that's gonna be put into Dunville, hopefully at the Works Yard.
So we can't, we can't dispose of that property until that tower's gone?
Right.
Wow, okay. Well, if we could expedite that any quicker, we can get rid of that property, would make some sense to me, but that's, I've been hearing about that for about seven years now, and here we are, another six, five years out, so, okay. Thanks for that one, Dave.
Through the mayor, so on the asbestos management, so what happens in any of the buildings where we haven't removed the asbestos, we still have to go in and rein inspect, and so that's part of the ongoing cost, and so we've worked our way through the program to eliminate as much as we can. And in some instances, when you do an inspection, you find that, okay, maybe now at this point you do have to remove because there's issues. So that's part of the ongoing cost. As far as lock and security replacement goes, we've moved to a new system with a FOB system in the new admin building. We're gonna see how that works for us over the next six months to the year. So far, it's been pretty good, but I think a lot of what we'll be doing moving forward is moving towards that system in the buildings as they come up for replacement. So it'll be a while before we reduce numbers, because we've still got a lot of other buildings to get to, and hopefully in the long haul, it'll eliminate staff time, because it's a lot easier to pass out a FOB and program a FOB than it is to change out keys and locks and, and, and cut keys, which is a, a big function, which takes up probably half of a person's time for the entire year.
Okay. And then lastly, though, Phil, the building condition assessments, twenty-five thousand a year, what, would that get you ten buildings, or what, what would it, five buildings? Or, it all depends?
Yeah, it, through, through the mayor, so depending on the size of the building, you know, those assessments are anywhere from four to five thousand to ten thousand dollars, so it's, you know, I would say on average, probably five. And, you know, we have, you know, about two-hundred-and-fifty buildings in the county, so it doesn't get you a lot, but we've, we've focused on the, the public buildings first and the more critical buildings, and so there's other ones still to come that are of a lesser priority, and that, that are still on the list. And it's a, it's a, a program where, you know, you should be going back in every fifteen years anyways to reassess the buildings, so.
Okay. And of those buildings, like, I know, like, museums and stuff and fire halls, but is our community halls part of these buildings also that we assess?
Through the mayor...
Or is that the community groups?
Through the mayor, we did do a, through Dave Aldrich's group, he, he did do assessments of all the community halls, and actually, we did a number of upgrades, significant upgrades, over the last four to five years. So they're all in pretty reasonable shape now, but it was a big undertaking and a big part of the asset management program and the, the actual building condition assessment, being public spaces, and that we still own those buildings, we took that on.
Okay. So in a nutshell, these numbers might come down, but not for a few years, till you get a better handle of where we're at?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Through the mayor.
And you did steal my thunder, bud.
Just a little clarification, Phil, basically for general public, as Rob touched on, the locks and security for community groups, like, whether it's Hagerhill Minor Hockey, Dunville Minor Hockey, whoever that have offices in our facilities, and we issue keys to, to said groups, that will be part of the replacement process with FOBs eventually as well, or moving forward.
Yeah, so through the mayor, that's a good question, and what we're gonna do is see how the system functions and see what the maintenance on the system ends up being, and then we'll probably move that route. I mean, we've had, depending on a minor hockey office, we, we've got locks with combinations, which you've experienced, Council Lawrence, and those locks could run upwards of eight, nine hundred dollars, and you weigh that out versus the time to, you know, create keys for the new members every year, and it's a whole turnover. So I, I'm pretty hopeful that the FOB system will be the way we go, and I think it will be a lot more efficient, but we want to get through a, at least a decent time period to test it before we say for sure which way we're going.
To Kathy, the three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand for the operatory and dental suite, so that's going into the multipurpose building?
That's, yes, that's going into the Dunville, as far as I'm aware, that's what that means. It's for the Dunville office?
For the multipurpose building.
For the dental, yes.
So is it, so this is right out of the county's tax dollars, and this is to respond? No, it's not?
No, no, it's funded, so if you take a look at the far right of the sheet, under general recoveries, that, yeah.
So this is the Ontario government's, is to respond to the Ontario government's program, seniors dental?
Yeah, there's no net impact for the, to the county for that project.
Okay. Was this on the guidance of Health and Social Services staff, that this was the location to put it?
There already is a dental clinic there, and this is an expansion to make it, the way, the proper way that it should be to, to provide those services, to actually have the clinic, and it also has to do with the expanded service. So, and it was, so this was appro- it also has to do with the expanded service. So, and it was, so this was approved through the Health and Social Services Advisory Committee, and then through the Board of Health ratified it.
Yeah, and I have, I have no problem with it going there. I think that's the right place to put the first one, but are we aware of whether there was any other plans to put any others across the county? Caledonia, Hagerstale?
Not that I'm aware of. The new office in Caledonia is much smaller than the old office in Caledonia, so some of the staff will be moving to the Dunville office, and it'll be an expanded full-service office in Dunville with health, social services, and housing. The, when the Dunville multipurpose building was renovated a few years back for water and wastewater-
Right.
At that time, they had roughed in some plumbing for the dental, so that's part of this entire project, and so it's already there and ready to go. But as far as expanding to another area of the county, at this time, I don't believe that that's being looked at.
Okay, thanks.
Conservation and Demand Management Plan, $20,000 every five years.
Through the mayor, so this is a provincially mandated plan that every municipality has to complete, so similar to the asset management plans, they're on a five-year cycle. So we do have one already, this will be our next one. It just sets targets, and you have to for energy consumption, and describe how you're going to reduce energy over the five years. So there's some other projects you'll see in there, some of those lighting retrofits. The lightings come to the end of the useful life, we retrofit them with more energy-efficient lighting, and-
That qualifies-
That qualifies for this.
Okay.
Well, we got through first section.
I think you want 23.
Sure.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Of all of them, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right.
A shirt for the Abbot Bear.
Anyone on 24?
Lot of money in Caledonia.
I'm going to ask the question, because-
Center of the universe.
We're going to do, we're going to do the EMS at the same time, right? Might as well, do fire and EMS?
They're tied together.
Isn't that how we normally do it, so that you can, we can ask the questions and then send you on your way to enjoy such a lovely day out there?
Sure, whatever works best.
Okay, so my question is-
That's what we meant, for him.
I see the fire hall here at 3.7, 3.8 million, and then if I go wherever EMS is, I can't remember what page it is. What's that under?
That's on page 78.
78?
So you have to add them together.
That's my question.
Yes, you do.
Darn. So-
You add them together.
Is that, so, just so that we're clear, I guess, is that what we were, have we always kind of been in that number range? Was that what we anticipated for the Caledonia Fire Hall EMS building, to be in the area of about-
Six million.
Yeah, just under about 5.8 million?
So through the chair, due to, we had it originally, I believe, around 5 million, but due to the increased costs of rebuilding the facility, as well as we had to adjust some of the sizes of the apparatus floor to fit some of the new apparatus that'll be going into that station as well, which increased the cost of the station.
Bernie, then Rob?
Yeah, we're getting into some major capital expenditures, and I've talked to you earlier this morning about it. What is happening with the province and their changes around with regard to ambulance availability and taking it out of our hands and have a substation someplace else, or administration someplace else?
So through the chair, there's been a lot of talk within the Ministry of Health in regards to modernization of healthcare, which includes paramedic services, and the goal is to reduce hallway medicine. The four key components that service operators are discussing with the province at this time is to improve our dispatch system, as well as community paramedics. So we unfortunately don't have a community paramedic at this time in Haldeman, but what that paramedic would do, instead of being on an ambulance, they would be in a first response unit responding to appointments that were made, which helps reduce our regular calls. So our regular patients that call on a weekly basis, we would send our community paramedic to deal with those, because a lot of times, those issues are just medication issues, they have medical history, dementia, for example, and they just more or less want to speak to somebody. So it will make our ambulances available for actually emergency calls. One of the other things that the province is looking at is reducing the inter-facility transfers, which would keep our resources in Haldeman. And as far as the province talking about taking the ambulance service away from Haldeman County and making one regional ambulance service, that has not been discussed by the province for approximately three to four months.
Thank you. As it's indicated in here, we're looking at for Caledonia Paramedic Services on page 78, that 1.9 million, and are we looking at an investment that we should or shouldn't be making at that time? That's the question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer that question. I mean, we've got the money in the budget, it's, I think it's next year. We're obviously going to be monitoring the implications of any change. We're also concerned about the debt we've accumulated to build already existing ones, and if that got split out, how we'd manage that. So it's something that's very foremost on our mind, and that before we would spend the money, we would want to have some sense that we're not spending the money, and then the service is going to not be ours to deal with it. We're, we're one of the very few municipalities that has fully integrated its paramedic and fire service, so this is an implication that's very important to us, but I don't think it's one that the province has really thought through. So we have made sure that in our communications to the province, that this is a big issue for us, and it's an important issue for us, and it's one in which clearly, you know, when you look at the, the cost of building these facilities, it's something that we need to have resolved before we start building new facilities. And then the only other point I'd like to make is, when you add the two together, this is an example, remember when I started saying the cost of construction has gone up? So not only is it the needs of the service, but this is an example of what happens to capital projects when your cost per square foot goes up. It can change fairly, fairly substantially over time. So it's based on the current number that we have, so.
Thank you very much. I don't want to give the impression, I don't want to expend the money, because I think it's something that we need. It's just, where are they going, and what expense they're going to cause for us?
Yeah, Dan?
Yeah, I just, I think that should be made clear. I think, as Craig, you've pointed out that this is moving forward, it's looking forward to the future with building something that is going to accommodate and service the community for years to come, instead of taking the, let's build it for the day, today, and then it's outdated in no time at all. So I think the public needs to be aware of that, and that the foresight has been very well thought out.
Jason, quick question on that. So I see it's another year out, and we've added more dollars to it. Well, I'm assuming you're pretty confident in these numbers that we put in there now. I know we're a year out, but next year, hypothetically, this gets approved, when will that tender go out? Like, the numbers, there's enough there, that we won't see tenders that'll come in half a million dollars higher?
I prefer this question to Dave, he's-
Okay, Dave. Come on up, Dave. I always keep, get you involved.
Take over, Rob.
Through the mayor, it's really difficult to estimate what those costs are going to be coming in next year. Last year, the cost of construction, the index for Southern Ontario went up 16%.
Yeah.
So, you know, if I knew what was going to happen next year, I wouldn't be doing this job. So. But, you know, we're confident, like, we've got an architect on board right now, giving us some preliminary drawings, we've got topographical surveys of the property, so we're into the, to the pre-construction now. So it's just a matter of coming up with a design that will hopefully fit within the budget.
Yeah, so what is being proposed is, has been vetted a little more, I don't know, I guess, more accurately than it was a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. I just didn't know how far we were in vetting it, as far as these numbers being accurate, but sounds like you're on top of it.
Hope so.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, so, back to page 25 on fire services. Is there a sale on bunker gear this year?
Through-
Just wondering why we're saving two grand.
Our bunker gears are placed on a 10-year cycle, and this year, there's not as many, there's not as many gear to be replaced.
So it's exactly 51,000 every other year, though?
Yes, according to the prices that we got from our supplier.
So what, this year, we just happen to have one less? Is that?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah. Yeah, I just had to ask, because I thought, how's that, it's just kind of odd that-
Yeah, back-
One year's two grand less than every other year.
So through the chair, back when Chief Grimwood was here, there was a plan put in place for the replacement of bunker gear. So previously, there was mismatched gear throughout the department, expired gear throughout the apartment.
So on 2030 next year, I'm going to see a $2,000 savings on the bunker gear, because this year is 2,000 less?
It would depend on the price of the gear at that time.
With regard to the number of fire stations you have, and the reduction in the number of fire stations, have you seen a reduction in the number of firefighters you have? Is that a target that you have and reach, and how does it affect your budgeting?
So currently, we have, we have a council-approved number of 274 firefighters. We're currently at a number of 269 firefighters at this point. So we budget in regards to how many firefighters we actually have active in the system.
Thank you.
Okay, page 26. Fire hydrant testing and identification.
So through the chair, through NFPA standard 25, it's up to the fire department municipality to ensure that all water systems meet specific standards. So for example, it even falls into sprinkler systems within building, private hydrants, municipal hydrants. So currently, we want to have the hydrants tested to ensure that the flow rate that they're actually supposed to provide, they're providing, and then we identify those fire hydrants with a colored ring. So if you were to drive through another municipality, for example, Hamilton, they, on every fire hydrant, there's a circular ring of different color, which allows the firefighters to know what the flow rate of that hydrant is. So if they have a structure fire, and they pull up to the hydrant, they know that they'll have an adequate flow rate when they hook up to that hydrant to be able to put the fire out.
So aren't we, I, I thought we were doing it on an annual basis, testing the fire hydrants and pressure. I thought we were doing that all the time, regularly.
That question, we would have to refer to water and wastewater.
Okay. And the private ones, I thought we were billing that to the individuals when we test those fire hydrants?
It's part of the, the standard, when our fire prevention officers go out and inspect, that's one of the things they check to ensure that the fire hydrants on the private have been tested.
Okay, but if we're billing the private owner for the fire hydrant, then shouldn't, like, I'm just trying to understand why we're spending 68 grand this year, and we're not doing it for the next nine years?
So this cost is to, is to purchase the rings for the fire hydrants, and it's also-
All those rings?
And it's also the cost to hire a third-party contractor to come in and assist with the testing of the hydrants.
And what's a particulate hood?
Pardon me?
What's a particulate hood?
So that's the hoods that the firefighters wear, as their protective equipment. So currently, we use a hood that is NFPA certified. However, it protects the firefighter against heat, it doesn't protect them against carcinogenic particulate. So they are, even though they have their hood on, as well as their bunker gear and their helmets, they still are absorbing carcinogenics through that hood, where this new hood prevents the absorption of carcinogenics.
So would that not be an ongoing cost?
So initially, we'll purchase the amount to, so every firefighter will be able to receive a hood, and then it'll be ongoing through our, we have another budget that we, by firefighting PPE through, so it would go with that as-
So I'll likely see that in operating next?
Yes.
I had, yeah, sorry, you.
Yeah, just getting back to the fire hydrant testing, that would be third-party testing, it wouldn't be our water and wastewater testing. Is this something separate? In other words, you'd have a consultant for that figure, and it's not a revenue that comes into the water and wastewater?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, page 27. Just looking at 21, the parking lot for the Jarvis Fire Hall, is that 60,000, is that, are we, are we going to need that? I mean, and I don't, I'm just asking, I don't know, but-
So through the chair, originally, it was in budget for this year, we pushed it off to 2021. It's, it's going to need a resurface, and this was the estimate that we had received.
Okay. 28. No, haven't been able to find any success yet, but we're working on it. See, that means you guys are doing such a great job. You've already done all that, we can't find anything.
Thank you.
Transportation. And you don't have to stick around for ambulance?
I can if you want, it doesn't matter.
Well, it's up to you. I suspect that you might be getting a call shortly, so you probably want to be out in the street.
Yeah, that's fine.
Page 32. That's a summary. 33.
Not much in my road.
Well, here we go.
What's happening in Cuba?
35.
Yeah, two questions with regard to the Caledonia Artura Road. I understand that's going to be paid for out of development charges.
Through the mayor, that's correct.
And noted, not noted in here is the fact that the Bridge Street in Dunville is going to be done this year. That's not on this budget, that's on last year's?
Yes, that's correct. So that budget was approved last year, and the project's underway, but because of, we want to ensure there was a way to accommodate future heating in the, in the farmer's market, we're going to, we've been working with Union Gas to get a gas line run there, so if it needs to be used in the future, it would be available. But we didn't want to go ahead with the paving and then have them come in later to tear it up. So that project's proceeding ahead.
And thank you very much for reaching out to the farmer's market group. What figure do we have on that, that we'll be expending for that project?
I'd have to get that number for you. I could get it-
That's fine, thank you.
Relatively quickly, if finance could probably pull it up, but we can get that for you, yeah.
Okay, so 35, we're good? 36, nothing there. I'm sorry, 37, 38.
A question on Swiggle Bridge Rehab. Is that off the Delt's Road or off Hart Road? That bridge rehab? The question is, Delt's Road was just redone, so I'm hoping it's not that one. So I'm hoping it might be Hart Road to be done with the resurfacing of Hart Road?
Through the mayor, that is the one that's on, it's on Robinson Road, is what I'm showing here.
Oh, it's on Robinson, okay.
Yeah, so just north of Carter Road.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, yeah, I forgot. There's three roads. I was only thinking there's two, there's three there. Okay, that's good then.
Hardly in your area.
Yours and mine, yeah.
In your neighborhood.
I was thinking that was yours.
Forty?
That's a rehab, so they'll be able to keep it.
I don't know. Forty-two? Rob?
Are any of this information here, that these bridges and roads, has any of this been brought up because of the damage of the storm? Or is this just basically roads that have already been budgeted in the past?
So through the mayor, these are all roads that are part of our annual program. I mean, there is a big acceleration in here from the granular conversion and the surface treatment, but none of the roads that were damaged by the storm are in this. They're all included in that four-point-two million dollars, so they're not part of this.
Not part of this. Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, thanks for that.
Tyson, where's the Thorburn Street? I don't see it in here, and I, I know it's not this year, but I'm certain that it's in the ten-year.
Yeah.
It's in rough shape.
Through the mayor, if you look at the bottom of page thirty-seven...
Are we scan by it?
Yeah, it's, it's a new and enhanced service because we're changing, we're urbanizing it. So that is going to be tied in with the development across the street from the new building. So we've met with a proponent, and it'll still be a couple of years out, but they're, they're planning to go ahead with that, and so we'll...
Yeah, so, and the reason I brought that up is I wanted you to actually say that, that, because I know that John's getting questions as to why Thorburn's not been done, and that, that we're trying to obviously time it with that development, that looks like we're finally starting to maybe see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Right, that's a good point, because they do have to put their underground infrastructure out into Thorburn, so they're going to be digging it up, so...
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Bernie?
Yeah, with regard to urban paving and other road, roadwork, is it on a twenty-year cycle, or how, how do you determine what to do? I see through economies, you try to maintain it in one municipality a lot of times, so that you got the same projects going on in the same municipality?
Yeah, through the mayor, so yeah, our urban paving program is on a roughly twenty-year cycle. It's a new program that we started about four or five years ago, and so we are doing a bit of catch-up now, but that is the cycle. And you'll see, we're spending a lot of time in Caledonia over the next few years, just because all those subdivisions were built around the same time. And we do try to group them by urban area. We just tend to get, it does two things. You tend to get better pricing, and you also, it's easier to notify all the residents in one area that you're doing, you're doing that area. So within each urban area, we've actually tried to group it by neighborhood as well, so we're not scattering around.
Thank you.
Forty-seven.
Oh, forty-seven, Stu?
Just a general question, I guess, following up to this twenty-year cycle for the roads. I'm just wondering, is there a Plan B for areas such as Peacock Point and Springville? Probably more predominantly Peacock Point. I'm just not sure if those roads will last another eight or nine years. So is that something that we, you know, as a county, maybe we inspect them annually to say, oh, we might have to move that timeframe up two or three years?
Through the mayor, we do do a roads needs study every four years that looks at them. I know, like, particularly for Peacock Point, I think it was about, it's probably six or seven years ago that we went through and surface-treated them. And so what we're doing with some of these urban areas is they get more built out, like, there are more people living there year-round. What you'll see in here is this is actually going to be paved out there, so it'll be, it won't be surface-treated again. But yeah, we do look at them every four years, and obviously, we do try to keep track. There's not a lot of flexibility necessarily to move around within this program, because there's, as you see, there's so many other roads that are there. But we do do them, these have all been prioritized. And the other important thing to note with this is it does now include the cost to do all the curb and sidewalk replacement at the same time for those areas that have it, but not to add curb and sidewalk, just to replace what's there.
Okay, and just to follow up, I guess, maybe to give folks in Peacock Point a warm, fuzzy feeling, if, if something in the interim, the next eight years, next summer, next fall, because of whatever drainage issues or the roads are collapsing, they don't have to wait till twenty-twenty-eight. We'll do an interim fix, a tar and chip, or whatever. I mean, that's normal maintenance that we would follow up on?
Through the mayor, absolutely. This is just that, that sort of complete redoing of it, but that, the annual maintenance goes on year-round, so if there are any issues, absolutely.
Thank you. All right, forty, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty?
So you don't see a lot in Ward Five, eh?
Just a question for staff to bring it to attention with the ongoing situation in Caledonia. The fourth line volume and traffic is, is exponentially increased, as we all know. We have the fourth line resurfacing on twenty-twenty-five for a half million. Will we, will we be pursuing the province for perhaps the fourth line reconstruction, or some repairs and so forth monies that we could get into coming sooner than later? Because I think that we're going to need that.
Through the mayor, we've been down this road before with the MTO, and they do not give any money for detour routes. What we would do is this surface treatment program, these roads, we do look at every year, because they can be affected by unusual traffic, and they're more susceptible to frost and heaves and things. So if we find that the fourth line has been beaten up, I was down there the other day, it is, there is significant truck traffic down there right now, we would, we would move it forward in the forecast to do it sooner. But we won't get any money from the MTO, just like they don't give any money to businesses or anything like that, so...
Got to ask.
Absolutely.
We'll send a letter on behalf of the county.
Yeah, and the other thing, too, is like, in relation to that, that bridge at York is getting the living peck beat out of it right now, and it's going to need some significance to it as well.
I've had a lot of emails over the last two weeks from, from my residents along Fourth Line and Mackenzie Road. You know, they're seeing a lot of the truck traffic that we see in Hagerstown every day, but a lot of the residents along that road were not aware that the fourth line is an agreed-upon route, designated route, in the event that six is closed for any reason, whether it be a major accident or whatever the case may be. Some of them were surprised to hear that. But on the other side of the coin, the fourth line, when we were under regional government, was a regional road, and it was originally built as a regional road. We've got truck traffic going down there to our work yard. We've got truck traffic going down there to Anita Ford, New Holland, for repairs. We've got dump trucks going down there that are delivering dirt to the Caledonia projects, residential projects, so... But I understand we are doing some minor repairs, so Ray Oaks tells me we're going to do some minor repairs on some of the bad spots. But the residents were surprised to hear that that was a disneyed route. But we have to have somewhere to divert them. That highway's been closed many times in the last ten years for, for different reasons.
The stop signs that we just approved at the Fourth and Mackenzie, are they, do we have flashing lights at those stop signs, or are they just, I haven't been to see it, and I just wanted to get clarification?
So through the mayor, we installed the stop signs first thing yesterday morning, so they're installed with the stop ahead, new stop ahead signs, and we ordered lights a couple of weeks ago, and they should be in, I think, around the week of the thirteenth, so about a week or so from now. And we'll install those lights as well, the flashing red lights on top of the new signs. But they're not in place yet.
Fifty, where was I? One, fifty-one?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, oh. Fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six.
This intake.
Lot of action in the next three years here.
You were having to deal with the HFI Saturday night, so...
I have, I have a lady who lives on Vane's Road who says, "I'll believe it when I see it."
You saved the veins?
Yeah.
I think she's contacted me.
"I'll believe it when I see it." She, she was...
Coming up this year.
She was poking me, she was, she was taking blood at the same time. I was really getting nervous.
Thought that needle was going to...
I hope it's in the budget.
Take six points.
Um, sixty. Rob?
On municipal drains, question is, a lot of these municipal drains are in Ward Five and Molton area. I don't have a clue what, where Fred Buckner is, where Broad Creek is. Can I be made aware of where these, because I do get calls on the maintenance for the drain, so can, send me an email where these drains are, so I have a bit of a heads-up before I start getting these emails and phone calls?
Yeah, we'll do.
That'd be great. Thanks.
And sixty-three. Sixty-four. Stu?
Yeah, just a question of staff. It doesn't impact the budget, but the, the two drains in Jarvis that were scheduled to be cleaned out this past January, I just wonder if I could get an update as far as done? People are asking.
Sorry, the question was, an update for the clean-out of the Jarvis drains, one and two?
Yep.
Through the mayor, the contract for the maintenance of those two drains has been out, and the contractor is working on it. They're currently working in the Dunville area. They're next, planning on moving towards Jarvis. It is weather-dependent. We've got some, some issues where we're kind of, we're running into spring right now, and it's pretty wet, so we don't want to cause damage as we're going through. So we will either delay it to maybe sometime in the summertime, or possibly next winter, if, if we have a really wet spring. But we don't want to cause damage as we're going through, or minimize damage, I should say.
Okay, I appreciate that, so I can relay the message that it's still on the radar, it's still going to happen. Okay, thank you.
I see.
Page sixty-five.
Don't go too far, Chris.
Page sixty-six. Sixty-seven. Counselor Sherton?
Chris, I hope that you can help. Under street lighting, I know I put initiative through last year, and we've been working with the MTO to get approvals. I'm hoping it's an oversight, but I don't see anything in street lighting for those requests that are budgeted. Or is that already been budgeted last year, and that's why it's not in here this year?
Through, through the mayor, yes, that's correct. It was budgeted, it's a budget item in two thousand and nineteen, and the project was initiated. We did the engineering work in two thousand and nineteen, so it's not been re-identified for two thousand and twenty.
Okay, so it's already, yeah, it just hasn't been paid out, but the dollars are there to, for the work to get done this year?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that.
Counselor Corbett?
Hang on, Chris, I think just another question here.
Well, I have three questions with regard to traffic, and I don't know traffic signals, where they apply. The traffic crossing on Main Street in Dunville, I understand that was set up in last year's budget, indication it's coming ahead this year?
Through the mayor, yes, that's correct. We've, we've purchased the crossing, the, the hardware for the crossing. We just ran into some delays in the fall with getting it installed, so it will be taking place sometime...
It'll be on the spring project?
That's correct.
With regard to your speed signs and photo radar, those, your speed signs that we have, they're supposedly collecting data. What are we doing with that data?
I'll defer to Tyson for that.
Through the mayor, so we are collecting the data, and as you've indicated, we're going to reach out to the OPP to see if they would have any use for it, but it does collect data from all the cars, and we just can download it from each machine.
And I see one of those add-ons that we got is more your speed signs. I don't know whether you have any comment at this time, or do you want to wait until we deal with it then?
Through the mayor, maybe this isn't appropriate time to deal with that one. There's a, I think there's a number that we'll have to deal with under transportation, so that would be one of them. Is that...
Yeah, through your worship, I think the intent is to go through all the briefings that have a levy impact at the end, yeah.
Thank you, and one final one. There's indication that we can come across or come up with a photo radar that's not budgeted. What is the thoughts on that?
Through the mayor, so for the photo radar, there was a good discussion at council about it, and staff have direction to report back to council on photo radar once we have more information. What we found is there's still just the two pilot projects, one in Toronto and one in Ottawa. There haven't been any municipalities that have moved any further forward with it. I think it's a lot more complicated than everybody imagined initially. I think the, the hardware itself is fairly straightforward, but it's all the processing of the information that you get with it, how it flows through to getting license numbers, the ownership, and then through to the prosecution. All that part is, is very complicated and will probably be very costly, but there will be a report coming back to council at some point, we're hoping later this year, but I don't anticipate it's going to be something that's going to be implemented this year.
Thank you. So we have a report coming back this year.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Is this the page where I should see new streetlights? Installation of new, brand-new streetlights?
Through the mayor, what you would have seen in past years before our switch to the Hydro One jurisdiction is that, under the street lighting, there's, there's one, you'll see a line there, the ten thousand for the replacements. That's simply for the replacement of ones that have been burnt out. What we've put in there, because what we found through Counselor Sherton's initiative, that working with Hydro One, every single new streetlight installation has to be done individually, and the costs can vary widely. And so what we've, what we've done is, rather than put in, before we did have a cost to install rural and urban ones, what we've put in is for the design and review, so if those requests do come forward, we'll work with Hydro One, but we would have to come back to council with a cost on it. Like, some of them are upwards of thirty-five thousand dollars.
I'm just trying to get some information as where we're proposing to put new streetlights. I, I've been, for example, for an example, I've been trying to get new streetlight, a streetlight, in front of Hagerstown Secondary School on Parkview Road. It's, it's very, very dark there at night, and there's not one streetlight in front of that school, which I, I just find bizarre. When that school was built, there should have been streetlights put in there. And so requests I keep getting year after year, so I'm just trying to find out where, where new lights are going to be installed in two thousand and twenty, and is that location one of them. I know staff was looking at it.
Yeah, through the, and there's no new streetlights planned... Yeah, through the, I mean, there's no new streetlights planned at this time. I mean, if there are, I mean, I think it would have to be something that we have to discuss on how to move forward of these, given the cost that's now, that we're now looking at. Because before it was a fairly straightforward process with Haldem and Hydro.
Okay.
And we would just work with them and the cost was fairly minimal. It's just, it's based on the new Hydro One specifications and what they require, so maybe we can talk afterwards.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't.
Chris is waving at me too, so I'll talk to him later about it. Thanks.
On that, uh, we have a meeting with Hydro One coming up. And I think that's part of the agenda and discussion is, uh, how these streetlights are gonna be managed. I'm, I've got a number of questions. Uh, back to sixty-six. The, uh, are we, the two hundred thousand for culvert placement, lining rehab, and the hundred thousand for raised traffic, island curb rehab, hot mix padding, uh, whatever that is, crack ceiling. Are those numbers based on a five-year cycle? Is it just, how, how do we arrive to those numbers? Not that I disagree with them, I just had to.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to some of these accounts. Um, the culvert placement and lining rehab, it, it's the historical history on that, or the history on that account is, we've just slowly increased it based on program demand. Um, it initially started out at fifty thousand and then a few years after that was raised to a hundred. Then we had a debate at budget time here and, uh, council's decision was to increase to two.
So are we, are we?
Using that.
While that end, are we, are we, like at two hundred, are we gonna get to the end, uh, where we, like, is it, or is this two hundred just gonna continue to just kind of cover the, the, or are we not getting there?
I don't see, I don't see this funding dropping in, in this cycle. Uh, the, the program demand is there, at least for this term, this ten-year term, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I base this, we're usually scheduled, this budget is scheduled by July of every year. And then the rest goes on a waiting list.
So it's all used up?
Pretty much.
And what's the life expectancy of these culverts?
It depends on the area, the soils, and the acidity in the water. Oftentimes, and the size of the pipe, we can use the neoprene pipes or the galvanized pipes, depending on the condition or the loads. And it, it varies, but anywhere from ten to twenty years.
Good. And the, um, same goes, I guess, with this traffic island and curb rehab. I know that we did bump that a while back with the.
Yes, I initiated that program or this account probably ten years ago now. It started out at sixty thousand dollars and we have bumped it. Um, it's helped tremendously. Our, our sidewalk inventory, the deficiency lists are coming down, the priorities of them. Uh, we could probably realistically increase this, in my opinion, for a couple of years, but it's, it's doing all right.
Right.
It's doing all right where it is.
Okay, the, uh, decommissioning of gas wells, thirty-five a year, are we gonna get to the end of that parade?
Yeah, I transferred, or we transferred that program to engineering this year, but it, this is a funny account. I mean, these things crop up based on people bringing them to our attention. Uh, oftentimes, we're not aware of these gas wells that are within our right-of-ways and, uh, we, we've carried this budget and unexpectedly, they just show up, so that's kind of, that's kind of where it stands.
Okay, Bernie?
Yes, with regard to litigation, I'm pleased to see that where our problems with sidewalks have been identified and marked, so hopefully there's a reduction in that sense. And once you mark them, is the intent to replace them or scale them down or?
Yes, absolutely. Um, not only are we mandated to, you know, maintain our sidewalks, we're also mandated to inspect them and identify any tripping hazards, so, you know, it can help alleviate people who may not see them, until they're restored.
Thank you.
Man?
Yeah, Ray, uh, on the, our, our Gal bridge street light reconfig, reconfiguration here for this coming year, is that, uh, just in preparation of the new bridge, um, that we have to monkey around with, whatever it is?
Through the mayor, yes, that's correct, so we have to move a light that's there. There's also in the, in the, um, rate budget, there's a piece of water main that we have to move out of the way, so we get these, the MTO issues us an order that we have to move them, just like every other utility, so that's planned, yeah.
Back to sixty-six. Where we were. The, uh, Cal, okay, first of all, the storm event repair. Not that I'm, uh, thinking that it won't happen, but if the four point two million doesn't come from the province, where does that end up landing? I know the answer, but I, I, I think it should be said and noted, right?
And through your worship, and I, and I think, uh, the CEO alluded to it, as well, as Charmaine during her presentations, we do have to revisit our, our road program if we have to fund it ourselves. And it may mean shifting of certain priorities and projects. Ultimately, though, if we have to fund it, you know, we'll have to find the funds within our current reserves and reserve funds. And I think as we indicated, one of the areas we are struggling with is, is the roads, uh, replacement reserves. Although, albeit farther down the road, it is contingent on some of the provincial funding. I think ultimately, you know, this program is put in place for the province for specifically these reasons. So, I, I mean, uh, you know, we're, we're hopeful that that's what the program's there for. We've, we've put in our application, provided, uh, significant support for, uh, that the, 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 the event caused the damage that it did cause. And so we're hopeful, obviously, that'll happen. Ultimately, yes, we'll have to revisit our road program and look at, uh, where, where we have to maybe move and shift some things to accommodate these costs if we have to fund them a hundred percent from the county funds.
So I just, I, I think it's important that we are all aware that nine percent of our budget is sitting on that item that hinges on the government province coming to the table. And, and so those that are suggesting that we're not doing anything for those people who have suffered out in Lake Shore, well, we've spent nine percent of the budget out there already, uh, without a guarantee. And, and that could end up on the shoulders of everybody in the county. So it's, it's, you know, when those calls and emails are coming in, that, uh, you know, what's happening locally with the county out in Lake Shore, it, uh, I think that's very important to make sure they're aware of. The hundred and thirty, I can't even see that, hundred and thirty-two thousand for Caledonia Decorative Crosswalks in twenty-three. Where's that going?
Uh, through the mayor, so the intent of that, it's been carried in the budget for a number of years. It actually came out of the, um, the Argyle reconstruction we did a number of years ago. So that's, that's planned for Cathness and Argyle to put in that, um, sort of brick look crossing there. That was part of the original plan.
Down, down the main intersection.
The main intersection, yeah.
Once the bridge is done.
Once the bridge is completed, so it's, you can see, if you look right above that, you'll see it's tied to the parking lot paving as well. So those are two items that we just left, left as part of the bigger project.
Now, was, was that part of the revitalization?
It was part of the revitalization, so it's really a, sort of a legacy carryover from that, that's been in the budget every year.
Well, we got a couple of years to discuss it. I, I, you know, again, I, I guess I don't want to get beaten on it now, but it's just, I, I'm not sure. A hundred and thirty-two thousand for these decorative sidewalks, crosswalks, uh, you know, I look at the one that we, we painted, the green one in Hager'sville, and I mean.
Trucks pounding.
Does it really, does it really, you know, you know, the one in, uh, the entrance of Selkirk, like you, you start to look at these and say, really? Uh, you know, in theory, I think on paper, you see the pictures and you think, oh, that seems like a good idea. But then, does it actually affect the change that we want and is it substantiated by the dollars we're spending? And I think a hundred and thirty-two thousand, you know, is a, is a lot of money that could probably be put in other useful purposes, so. I don't want to say no, but it's something we should be discussing with the chamber and the BIA and, and maybe put it back to them.
Yeah, can I comment?
Sure.
Um, yeah, I agree with you wholeheartedly, the hundred and thirty-two grand for, for some decorative, uh, sidewalking, yeah, it looks nice and everything. But if we could take a hundred and thirty-two and put it into something more tangible that would say aid safety, like money towards a real crosswalk with lights and so forth, I agree. We have to look at the priorities of it.
And that brings my, my next question to, and I wanted to know, where is it in here? Because we've had discussions with crosswalk, specific lighting or illuminated crosswalks at Dunville at the farmer's, at the market area there. And then also we talked, uh, and maybe we didn't on, on, in council, but I know the previous CEO, so the new one can't take blame for it. But the previous CEO and I talked about, you know, the crosswalk here in Keoga, which would take the, the, um, the, the rail line path up across by the courthouse and get them across the street to the sidewalk. Because currently, we, we bring these people across this bridge and we let, we, we land them in a parking lot and then there's nowhere for them to go, other than to, to dodge traffic through, through Highway Three. So I don't see that in here.
Yeah, through the mayor, so the intent and the, and the commitment from staff, and there is a council resolution for this, is to come back with a report, like once you've installed the one in Dunville. The idea is to get the costs all nailed down and then for councillors to see what it looks like. It's based on the Hamilton one. And then the idea, I think, was to have, I believe, one or two per war, per urban area, um, working with the local councillors to have it installed and then have that put in the budget probably for two thousand and twenty-one, or it might be rolled out over time.
So the Dunville one's already been budgeted and?
That one's already budgeted, it just didn't get installed last fall because we're coordinating it with the farmer's market project. So that one's slated to be installed this year. And then there'll be a report coming back to indicate the costs, the type, and also the parameters about where they should be installed. There's sort of a warrant system for them as well.
Okay. Page sixty-seven. I think the question was asked, but the streetlight, ten thousand replacement, like, uh, didn't we just do a wholesale replacement of the county streetlights? And, and I thought these LED lights were gonna give us like twenty years of.
Yeah, Ray can probably address that. It's an annual, it's a maintenance, ongoing maintenance, really.
Yeah, Tyson is correct. Uh, primarily, it's an ongoing maintenance item for the pole replacement. But for example, we just, we were just notified this morning of, of a light at the fourth intersection at number six highway that is an old Cobra headlight, so it was missed and this, this account would pick something like that up.
So the current, like, but all the new ones that we just did in the urban centers, they're all under warranty and?
They are. Uh, some of the warranties are expiring, believe it or not. But, yeah, most of them were under warranty.
Must be here too long when the warranties are expiring, and I'm still sitting here. My warranty's getting near an end too, I think. Sixty-eight. It's probably you, Ray, again, I mean, with the traffic count studies, is that Tyson, is that you?
Uh, yeah, through the mayor, so that one, um, Counselor Corbett raised that earlier. So that was the one that was shown every year in the operating budget, this amount, so it's more appropriate to be in the capital budget. So there's a reduction in the operating, it's just moved over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the signal lights, I know, is that something that, from as a result of the downlight in Keoga that we decided we were going to inventory some signal lights? Is that what that is?
Yeah, yeah.
So that we're not waiting two, three weeks or what have you for?
That's right.
Putting a light up?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're only, and that's, what is that, one light, fifteen grand?
Uh, through the mayor, I'm not sure exactly what it buys. I think it does a controller and probably some other heads, but the idea is just to get an inventory in there, so we're not waiting that eight weeks.
But I'm assuming that's gotta be at least one light? I, I, that's, fifteen grand doesn't sound like a lot of money for.
It was initially budgeted based on one light, but based on costs that have gone up since that point, I don't know that it would cover a complete replacement.
Okay, so that's something likely we'll have to adjust next year?
We're looking at that.
I really think that we need to have at least one or two in inventory, so that we're not subject to that criticism when it takes a month for one to come in and.
Yes, and we are in the process of inventorying our poles, uh, exactly what you had just stated. But, um, it's just something we're starting to look at and we'll be going through this year.
Okay. All right, um, I'm gonna put the question out to, uh, to Graham View. Do we, uh, wanted to get through Graham View so you guys can take off, or do you want a break for quick bite? And, and then, uh, and be here for, for another hour? Actually, it's up to you. Okay. So let's move on to.
Page eighty-four.
Page eighty-four.
So I, I put this yesterday.
Tony, if you'll mind.
Sure. There's not much in the thing.
Okay.
Where'd we go, eighty-four?
Compressors. Something going on out there.
Okay, all right. So starting, starting on page eighty-four. And, um, the first question that I have is the, um, the compressors, the twelve thousand a year compressors, HVAC and refrigeration. Why, why are we, can you give me some information on that? Why are we spending that?
Sure, I anticipated there'd be questions about some of the services we'd be having, so I brought Kellen with us, the facility supervisor.
Yeah, through the mayor, um, so that twelve thousand dollar standing, uh, from what I understand, we have thirteen air handlers that are on the rooftop. That is kind of a, uh, average replacement cost over the years of failures. So we haven't replaced the entire unit, we're replacing the integral part of, of the air handler, just compressors year over year. So that's an average cost that, that we've sustained over those.
Sure, and you have, how many, how many units?
There's thirteen.
Thirteen rooftop units? And so you're, this is built in to replace them on a, on a particular?
As, as they fail, yeah.
As they fail, okay. Okay, any other questions on that page? Counselor Corbett?
I don't know which page it comes on, but I have to ask in terms of, uh, assistance with lifting devices to mitigate, uh, skeletal problems. Have we enough that help out our staff to provide that assistance?
Through the mayor, we do, um, have a replacement plan for overhead lifts and ceiling lifts. That's what you'll see through the budget. We also have floor models that we have, uh, through the capital budget. We feel that we have sufficient numbers. Uh, we often look at the infrastructure within the home. Kellen's doing a very thorough assessment at this time to see if we can, um, facilitate using. Currently, we only put the lifting device, overhead lifting devices in one side of a room, based on the infrastructure that we have. We're looking at if we can facilitate, so that one carriage will actually run a track for both sides of the room, so that we can actually, uh, cut expense but have more lifts available.
So we have sufficient to mitigate those concerns that we have?
We do, yeah. We are, we are a no lift policy in our home, so we do have mechanical lifts, some are in the ceiling and some are floor models.
Okay. Counselor Sherton?
Uh, through the deputy mayor, um, my understanding, I see there's a, quite a few dollars for building and property. And my also understanding is some of them mechanical, i.e., i.e., air conditioning, heating, the efficiencies isn't really working. Is that part of that, or is that a separate project to be looked at?
Yeah, uh, through the mayor, the, so to, to talk about efficiencies, um, the current budget as it stands would be to deal with ongoing day-to-day. Um, we're looking at some of the synergies with the new cab building at, um, taking some opportunity at, at using some of the building automation. So that'll be forward coming with what you'll see there as, uh, our full, um, facility assessment that we're gonna do. So that'll hopefully come out of that.
So that'll be more of the building and property?
Yeah.
And then the other, the other matter is almost a whole new. And then the other, the other matter is almost a whole new costing that we might see down the road?
Yeah, that, we're going to identify that this year. We're going to do our full, you'll see a line item for our facility assessment, probably a little more high level, but we will, you know, we don't have that planned, 10-year plan built into our 10-year forecast, so we're looking at identifying that this year.
Craig?
Kathy's going to...
Kathy can speak to this, but this is, this is one area where you'll see changes next year. The, the asset management approach to the, this particular building has not been completed yet, and so it's at a stage now where there needs to be systematically looked at, and we build out a proper capital plan, so you can expect changes, but Kathy can talk to that.
Yes, that's what I was going to speak to. So you'll notice the $45,000 in 2020 for a facility condition assessment. So the, so Gramview Lodge was redeveloped, for those of you who were not around the table at that time, in 2006. And since that time, when, when Kellen came on board, we realized that there hadn't been a detailed plan for major replacements of the infrastructure in the building, and those who do recall the redevelopment will know that we kept part of the existing property and facility at that time. So a lot of the infrastructure was connected to old infrastructure. So you may recall, a few months ago, we came to council for an emergency purchase for plumbing repairs, that was related to how the old system ties into the new system. So this facility condition assessment is going to give us a broad picture of what we need to spend on critical infrastructure in the facility, as well as the more minor infrastructure, so that we can come back next year, and we can forecast in the budget properly for those replacements, because that hasn't been done. So most of, if you take a look at page 83, which is the summary page, you can see that under building and property, in 2020, the amount is much higher than the following years. That is because we're addressing this year the critical items that we can't wait for, we have to repair them. The other item, the other years will increase, and you'll see next year, that you'll see drastic increases in some respects for major infrastructure replacements that were not accounted for in previous capital forecasts. So I wanted to point that out, in particular, under the building and property, that Kellen's been doing a great job at assessing what is there now, what is not there now, and he's got a plan in place for this year to have that, to build our capital forecast out for future.
Rob?
So on that, this building automation system upgrades, it hasn't, it's worked well for 14 years, and now we need it?
So the building automation upgrades are different than the condition assessment, and these are, that is part of the critical repairs that we have to do. We've been advised by a consultant that we can't wait any longer to repair those. What we did, and what you don't see here, unfortunately, is all of the items that could have been presented, we took a thorough look at what can we pull out, and what can we wait until we get the full facility condition assessment done? That doesn't necessarily need to be done now, but there were a few items, which you see here, that we could not wait for. We have to get them done this year, and if you want more details on that particular item, Kellen can speak to the specifics.
So that includes this magnetic initiative, magnetic locking system?
No, the magnetic locks are under the new enhanced service, the 10,500.
Yeah.
So that item is, that's a bit of a different situation than what I just explained. That item has been ordered to be done by, through our fire department for fire safety under the...
So what has changed over the last 16 years?
I'm not sure if, if anybody's here from fire that could respond to that, but perhaps...
Jason's here. It's curious that it's worked for 14 years, and now it needs to be changed.
Actually, just on that, too, I, I thought we just changed them locks on that, and not too long ago.
Go through the chair. Our fire inspectors do, it's a vulnerable occupancy, so under the, the act, they have to do an annual inspection of the building, and the doors in question are being propped open with wooden wedges. The, those doors, if they're to be propped open, have to have a magnetic system that when the fire alarm goes off, those doors are to close. So they're currently being held open by wedges, and that is against the fire code.
So that hasn't been compliant for the first 14 years? It's just brought to your attention now, or...
The fire inspector found it this year. In regards to inspections prior to, those doors could have been closed when the inspection was being done.
Oh, I see. So you, they noticed that they were propped open with the wedges, and because of that...
Yes.
So if they weren't there that day, or the doors were closed, we might not be spending that dollars this year?
Yeah.
No, that can't be said any better.
So this year, instead of a meat slicer, it's a $35,000 grease trap. What is a $35,000 grease trap do?
It's all about the building.
A septic tank. No, so it's the infrastructure behind it, both, there's two grease traps within our main kitchen that are both rotted out, the bottoms are rotted out. That, that being said, the vent piping is all eroded up through the ceiling, which goes through the floor up into the, the ceiling space, so we have to open up the whole floor or two...
Nice.
...to replace all the vent piping. With infection control and all the other bells and whistles, right?
Okay. 85? I think you guys did that one. 86?
Pretty much, yeah.
How much lounge and room furniture do we need?
Again, this is similar to what everyone has said in the past about looking at our replacement plan. This is lounge furniture that can include the resident rooms, so the resident rooms all come with an armchair. It's also in our public area use spaces of the home, the couches and chairs along the way, so furnishing for home areas for 32 residents.
Right. So is 20,000 representative of a five-year average?
It's typically what we're spending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then therapeutic tubs, we're spending 23,7 for four years, but then we're not spending it after that?
Because it's on a replacement schedule, yeah.
So what's the life expectancy of those?
Typically, 10 to 15.
Okay, so we won't see that for another... And I guess that goes the same for floor lifts and tub chairs and the walk-behind vacuum, it's all kind of...
Exactly. All of these equipment purchases, we've planned based on the recommendations, manufacturer recommendations for replacement. Prior to going in to the budget for 2020, we planned based on replacement, but last year, we took a good look, solid look, at what is in a state of fairly decent repair, and we can get another year out of, and we have actually taken some things out of our budget. So that's why you might see some fluctuation in the numbers, because we feel that we have another year out of that.
Anything else? 87? Steve?
Yeah, thanks. Through here, just a quick question about the metal, the sanitizer for equipment, is that the actual little units, or, or do we stop sanitizing after two years? I'm just like, why is that not continuing?
Yes, it's the actual sanitizer that we have in our utility rooms, one on each unit.
Okay.
So there's four of them, they're on a replacement schedule.
Thank you.
Okay, 88, nothing there. And with that, we'll break for lunch, and reconvene at 1.
Thank you.
You guys make sure you stay for lunch, though.